I would invite everyone to, uh, everyone to, uh, to pray with me. If, if you will, let's bow our heads, please. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, we humbly come to you today to give thanks, to give thanks for our lives, for our health, for the freedom that we have to assemble in this building tonight. I lift up these, uh, school board members and pray that you would continue to guide their efforts in leading the youth of our community. Bless them, Lord, please bless their families. Uh, give them the strength to continue to serve. And finally, Lord, we pray for the youth of this county. We pray that you guide, guard, and protect them in all their ways. Help them to seek you and your wisdom. And we pray all these things in your son's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I call to order and welcome you to the Bradley County Board of Education meeting for November the fourteenth. I would like to recognize Tom Craft with the Bradley County Commission. Denny Collins, where are you?
You speak.
Okay, uh, with the Bradley County Commission and Bradley County Schools. Did I miss anyone? No? Okay, well, welcome and thank you for being here. Uh, the pledge to the flag, Josh Taylor.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item of business is the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I would like to recommend adding, uh, and, uh, ask for a motion to add the field trip to the consent agenda for Walker Valley Chamber Choir to go to perform at the Biltmore Christmas Candlelight Tour. I would like a motion to add that to the consent agenda.
Do I have a motion to add that?
I'll make a motion.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Bryson and a second by Ms. Kason to add that to the consent agenda. And congratulations, Walker Valley High School. That sounds exciting. Thank you. Do we have anything else that we want to pull or add to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve it.
Dr. Lovinggood made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bryson. Any discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, persons requesting to address the board on agenda items, Ms. Refner.
Uh, Madam Chair, no more questions.
Thank you. The next item, Director of Schools' report, Dr. Linda Cash.
Um, thank you. And in front of you, you will see a director's report just highlighting some of the things that have happened this month. Uh, many of us were there. I particularly want to highlight, uh, the Ocoee Middle School groundbreaking for our addition there to, for all of our students. And also want to thank again, um, those of you who are having Thanksgiving lunch and to Ms. Emily Brown for making sure all those things happen along with our administrators. And I want to give a shout out to the road show success that we all went to. Uh, what a great way to, uh, highlight our schools and to work. And today we had our, um, and I just forgot what to call it. Breaks to educate at Ocoee Middle. And we'll continue highlighting in the board moving those. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that Sports Fest was a success and very highly competitive as a matter of fact. Um, and then our student advisory met and we had some, some suggestions for their principals from our students. So a great, uh, month for us. And just noticed you have some saved the dates at the bottom. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to delve in and answer or expand.
Any questions? And I heard that, um, Ms. Goins stayed in, in the cafeteria and served lunch. So you want to tell us about your experience?
Oh, it's great. I love the kids. I got to serve the eighth and the sixth graders. And I absolutely love serving them. They're wonderful.
Well, it was a great day, uh, at, uh, Prospect and then it was a great day today at Ocoee Middle. So thank you very much. Uh, the next item, TESA accountability, Denny Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Ms. Kason, we missed you today at Prospect. I understand you received your lunch.
I did, thank you, Mr. Montgomery.
Shout out to Mr. Montgomery for the, for the lunch delivery. Well, well done, Mr. Montgomery. In your board packets this evening, you have, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five TESA accountability report. Uh, this is an annual report that's due. This is the second year of it. It's a requirement from the Department of Education. It lays out the academic goals from the state board, or the State Board of Education, uh, in terms of what we're trying to do. We narrow that focus into five goals. And they ask us to report how our TESA funding is used in support of those goals. So that lengthy, uh, document that you have is the submission for that. We need to seek, uh, as a requirement from the Board of Education, approval from the board, uh, to submit that. And so I'm here tonight to answer questions and ask for your approval.
Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the TESA accountability report?
I make a motion, we approve it.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Have a motion and a second discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, the next one is the, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar, Dana Yost.
Good evening. You have a copy of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year calendar for your approval. The calendar committee, uh, collaborated to organize this calendar. Two calendar choices were created to allow teachers the opportunity to vote on their preferred choice. And, um, Cleveland City Schools has aligned their schedule breaks with ours. And copies of the, of this calendar will be presented to Cleveland State and Lee University pending your approval.
Any questions regarding the calendar? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven academic calendar?
I make a motion, we approve the calendar.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
And I think, Ms. Yost, you have the next one, LEA compliance?
Yes, ma'am. I am requesting your approval for the annual compliance report. Our report confirms that we have no corrective action plan and are fully compliant with federal and state education laws.
And there should be no questions then, right?
That's right.
But anyway, does anyone have any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the LEA compliance report?
I make a motion, we approve.
Mr. Bryson made the motion, second?
Second.
Ms. Kason, discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Yost. Our next item is ESER application, Terry Murray.
I've got the gift that keeps on giving.
I guess so. I hope so.
Um, what I need is for you to sign off on some additional funding that systems did not spend. So it went back in the budget, so it was divided out again. So we got some extra money. So what I need is for the board to sign off on the extra one hundred and seventy-one thousand.
So we had to have a hundred and seventy-one thousand? Okay, any questions?
We've not spent it?
We have spent it.
That's what I'm saying. I will. That's what I was going to say.
It doesn't take us long to spend money. Any questions? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the ESER application for fiscal year 2025?
I make a motion to approve the ESER three point oh application for 2025.
And I'll second since we've already spent it.
Okay.
What did we spend it on?
It was on really money devices. Okay, uh, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Ms. Goins?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, Parkview Architect Selection, Josh Taylor.
Yes, uh, this, I'd like to make a motion that we approve, uh, Cope Architecture for the, uh, drawing and rendition there for the expansion at Parkview.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the committee to approve, uh, Cope Architecture. Do I have, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Uh, bids, Pi Innovation Center Commons AVL Package, Scott Webb.
Excuse me. Uh, I'm asking for your approval for the Pi Innovation Center Commons AVL Package bid to the Loud Media Group. They were the lowest bid. Do you have any questions?
What was it too?
The Loud Media Group. It's the audio visual lighting package for Commons.
Okay, do I have a motion to award the bid for Pi Innovation AVL Package to Loud Media Group LLC?
Yes, ma'am.
I make a motion, we accept that bid.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I have a question. Are we getting any kind of, any kind of, uh, microphones?
Yes, we'll have microphones.
For the Vokker Center?
Yes.
Okay.
Plenty of microphone packages, LED screens, lighting.
That's included in what we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Lovinggood.
What is this? I hear what Ms. Nancy said was a great question. What is this included? I mean, how much?
What's included, it, it concludes a comprehensive, uh, lighting package for the gym, for the stage area, uh, LED screens for the side wall, similar to what, what's at First Baptist, uh...
Is it, but it covers?
The entire, it's a, the, um, PA system, all of that for the entire gym.
Is it working with our security system?
No, those are two, there's, those are two separate, security is two separate issues.
Okay, but they're not hooked up at all?
Mm-mm.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair, just a comment. That completes, uh, all of the portions that we needed to be at the Vokker Commons. And we're very excited to have that.
We are, we are very excited.
And, um, what we can, what we can do with that for performances and the community is extremely exciting. And again, we would like to thank, uh, Vokker for being partners with us and providing that, um, financial asset, allowing us to do that.
All right, um, Miranda, will you call the roll?
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Waterville Community Elementary School Roof, Kyle Page.
Thank you, Ms. Beatty, board. Uh, it is our recommendation, and we sent out the memo on November the sixth, that we use foamcrete, uh, for the Waterville roof. We put that bid out, uh, we had eight vendors that came, and foamcrete was the lowest bid for that roof. Uh, it is not the total roof, but it will get us a pretty good start on the replacement of that roof.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the bid for Waterville Community Elementary School Roof to foamcrete?
I make a motion to approve the foamcrete bid for Waterville Elementary.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Kason. Discussion, questions?
I have a question. You said that wouldn't complete the whole roof. Did we need the whole roof completed or?
We're in the process of getting all of our roofs up to him. Chuck is better to speak at this than I am. Uh, this is really Chuck's wheelhouse with him being out. I'm bringing this, but I've been through the process with him. Uh, and we are in the process of getting all the roofs with a twenty-plus year warranty. And, uh, it's hard for a lot of people to believe, but Waterville hasn't had a roof since it was built. Now, if you think about that, Waterville was built in nineteen ninety-six, I believe, or ninety-two?
Wow.
So it's pre-two thousand.
New one.
Is that correct?
Ninety-one.
Ninety-one.
Nineteen ninety-one. Well, that was a great roof.
So it's time. Uh, we've got a lot of good life out of that roof, but it is time for, uh, a new warranty.
Uh, Dr. Cash, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, Madam Chair, uh, oftentimes when we have, especially our very large schools, roofing is such a, uh, huge financial cost that we do those in, uh, portions of the building. And so you will see this again on your capital outlay for next year to finish this project.
It's a phase, we're phasing it.
Thank you.
I wanted them to have a full look at this.
I understand. And I will tell you to our awareness, there's no leaks or anything really at this point, but it is time to get it under warranty and, and get moving with.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
And I, I do want to say, um, on the operations side of our school system, we are very intent on getting everything in a cycle where we don't end up where, uh, our, either our heat and air units are roofing, everything that, we're not at the point where we're at an emergency situation. So we are trying to make this cyclic that, so we are always under warranty and always trying to. And I want to shout out to our maintenance department along with, uh, Mr. Page of staying on top of that and getting us in a place where we're not waiting till things are desperate, but we are maintaining as all facilities should be maintained.
Thank you. Miranda, will you call the roll?
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Grant Technical Assistance and Evaluation Services, Melissa Presswood.
Good evening. So with some of our federal grants, we need Grant Technical Assistance and Evaluation Services to make sure that we are meeting our goals and objectives, remain compliant. And so we bid these services out every five years. We, um, had bids received October third. We had three companies submit bids. And based on their experience and the services provided, our team recommends that we accept the bid for the evaluation group with your approval.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the bid for Grant Technical Assistance and Evaluation Services to the evaluation group? Yes.
I make a motion to Grant Technical Assistance and Evaluation Services.
And I bet that Mr. Bryson wants to second that. Any discussion or questions?
Well, I said we don't want to ask, but is this the group we've used in the past?
It is.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Our next item is land purchase for the middle school, Lauderdale Memorial Highway Corbett Route.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hot off the, uh, hot off the presses, you received today, um, uh, the purchase and sale agreement that has been cleared by seller and by our outside counsel. Uh, so all the attorneys, uh, all the terms and conditions in this, uh, purchase and sale agreement are consistent with the letter of intent, um, that we originally circulated. Um, there's one error in this that I need to point out in section eighteen. The limit of liability is the full purchase price, not the amount that's listed there. So that will be corrected before we execute this.
Okay, and where are you?
Section eighteen.
Page five.
Okay.
So with, um, with your approval, um, we will, uh, execute this, um, deposit the earnest money with the closing agent, um, and release the title policy, uh, release the work that has to happen to get the, uh, title policy in place.
And with the change on eighteen?
With the change on eighteen, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the execution of the purchase and sale agreement and payment of the earnest money?
I make a motion, we approve.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Taylor. Any discussion, questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I request that on number eighteen, it reflects in the minutes that, that will be corrected and the total price will be, uh, sent out to the board, uh, when it is corrected so that you see that it has been corrected before the signatures.
Do you want to make that a part of the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Taylor, is that okay to add that to the motion?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Bryson, I'm sorry.
But I'll still second it.
Okay. All right, Miranda, just adding that eighteen and the exact amount?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Totally.
Uh, Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Budget amendments, Ellen Smith.
Good evening. Um, we've got, uh, two budget amendments, so we're going to take up the one forty-one dash two thousand twenty-five dash twenty-four first. This budget amendment is moving money from Fund One Seventy-seven to Fund One Forty-one to increase our ability to land purchase. That's the five hundred thousand that you see at the top of that page. And then the second entry under that, that total sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-one cents is money that we are moving around to finish out the AVL project that, um, Mr. Webb presented just a few moments ago.
Okay, uh, do I have a motion to approve the budget amendment for Fund One Forty-one?
I make a motion, we approve.
A motion by Mr. Bryson, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Goins. Uh, any discussion, questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Okay.
And the second budget amendment is tied directly to the first one. This is the budget amendment for Fund One Seventy-seven that we are moving the five hundred thousand out of and then moving the sixty thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-one cents into for the AVL project. These two are directly tied together.
Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendment Fund One Seventy-seven?
I make a motion, we approve the budget amendment One Seventy-seven.
Ms. Kason makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lee. Uh, any questions, discussion? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Policies on first reading, Amanda Lee.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Uh, the first policy we have is policy three point two zero five, security. Um, new state law, public chapter eight eighty-two requires that principals immediately report certain types of assaults and certain acts of vandalism to the director of schools and local, uh, law enforcement. And we have updated the, this policy, um, to add this requirement. So I would like to make a motion to approve policy three point two zero five on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. The next policy is policy four point zip, four point six zero three, promotion and retention. Um, public chapter eight twenty-nine added two new state laws, um, making further changes to promotion and retention. And we have updated our policy to reflect these changes. So I would like to make a motion to approve policy four point six zero three on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bryson, discussion, questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Next policy is Policy 5.307, physical assault leave. Previously per state law, physical assault leave was only available to teachers, but Public Chapter 839 extends this type of leave to any employee who is absent from assigned duties as a result of physical assault or other violent criminal acts committed during the course of their employment. And so this policy reflects that change. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy 5.307 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Next policy is 5.701, substitute teachers. Public Chapter 735 requires that substitute teachers receive annual school safety training, and we have updated our policy to include a provision on this requirement. I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy 5.701 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Next policy is 5.802, qualifications and duties of directors of schools. State law now requires the director of schools to report additional educator information to the State Board of Education. Public Chapter 577 requires a report be made if an educator has pleaded guilty, no law con, I can't say that word, or has been convicted of a, or has been convicted or otherwise found guilty of certain offenses in other jurisdiction. And our policy has been updated to reflect this change. I would like to make a motion to approve Policy 4.802 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, let me correct that, it's Policy 5.802, not 4.802.
Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes ma'am, who was the second?
Mr. Bryson.
Okay. Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you. Next policy is 6.318, it's school admissions and Policy 6.318, admissions of suspension or expelled students. This is while state law already requires parents or guardians to provide information to the school district if their student has been adjudicated delinquent for certain offenses. Public Chapter 721 clarifies that principals may specifically request this information from parents or guardians, and we have updated our policy to reflect this change. So I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.318 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Goins, discussion, questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Last one. Policy 6.409, reporting child abuse, Public Chapter 571, districts are required to report the names of the child abuse coordinator and the alternate child abuse coordinator to the Department of Children's Services, and we have updated the core Spartan model policy to align with this language. So I'd like to make a motion to approve Policy 6.409 on first reading.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? Miranda, will you call the roll?
Yes, Nancy Kason.
Yes.
Josh Taylor.
Yes.
Ted Bryson.
Yes.
Amanda Lee.
Yes.
Rachel Goins.
Yes.
Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Yes.
Vicky Beatty.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is appointment of the Janitorial Bid Committee for Bradley County Schools. So I would like at this time to appoint Amanda Lee and Nancy Kason to join that committee of Johnny Moe, Ellen Smith, Jeff Paulson, and Candace Belt.
Just what I wanted.
And Chuck McKay. Anyone else that I missed?
I ran back and forth with you guys, I better get Paulson.
And I'm assuming that you guys accept. Our next item is Bradley Central High School track discussion, Dr. Jeff Lovinggood.
Well, it was great to hear from the county commission in the last meeting and their process of what they're going to do next for our county in providing fundage. And in that, in that meeting, I think it was said that they were going to provide 1.8 million dollars for us providing a track at Bradley Central High School. And I want to cry, I appreciate y'all's doing that for us and providing that fundage. And I know there's a schedule for that to happen, and I know I get questions all the time from the community and especially Bradley High School, is what are we going to do with the track? And I know this board has been dealing with this. When I got on the board for about, I think, past eight years, so I was just kind of curious and about, this is my last board meeting, we'll address that here in a second, I was just kind of curious, having a little discussion about what is, Dr. Cash, what is our plan? I know y'all have a plan, you're very, y'all are all very strategic. So what is the plan on, now the county commission is providing 1.8 million, and I think it's about a $3 million process of providing a track. So what is our plan in the future for providing a track for Bradley Central High School?
Dr. Cash.
Madam Chair, I think those would be board decisions as we move forward with the projects that you have, and as the commission comes to that agreement of what they want to do, it would be the decision of the board to look at the projects and decide what was, what was the priority and what funding would be available. So that would be, continue to be a discussion about priorities for the board and when monies and funds were available.
Sounds like a winner. I just think, you know.
I understand that.
About how they do projects, and I appreciate the excellence of this board, and I love each one of them on this board, and appreciate their continued involvement. And I do also, Mr. Dr. Cash, I just think, if you look at the size of school Bradley Central High School is, built in 1972, it would be important for us as we continue to deal with holistic education. And I think, I think, and look at Title IX, as well as providing opportunities for kids in soccer, lacrosse, opportunities for locker rooms for tennis, as well as softball in that corner up there, I think it would be, I want to encourage this board in the future to put that on the priority list. Because I think in our country today, as we look at girls' sports in our, I think in this crew, in our county, that we would say that, one, that holistic education is important. And I would say that, I could have a good argument that athletics is a part of education. Secondly, is this, as our country looks at different types of things in girls' sports, I think we need to make a statement that Title IX is important, I know it is for this board, and I know it is for Dr. Cash. So I just, I just want to encourage us to make it a priority to provide kids on the south end of town at Bradley Central High School a track. Ninety-seven percent of schools, Bradley Central High School's size, have trackings. And I think it would be, and I know we have projects coming up, we've been dealing with this for about eight years, and I'm not trying to filibuster here, I'm just saying, I think it's important for us to keep it on the high priority list, for us to have a track. I know it's Jerry Frazier's dream. When I came on this board, and he's gone to be with the Lord, and here I have served it in his place. And so I think, and I know you will, and I know the county commission has, so I just want to encourage you to do also the same thing. So I have for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lovinggood. Our announcements, November the 20th, Bradley County Schools Roadshow at Waterville Community Elementary School. November the 25th through the 29th, schools will be closed for Thanksgiving break. December the 10th, Bradley County Schools Roadshow at Bradley Central High School. December the 12th is our next regular scheduled board meeting. Does anyone else have an announcement that I missed?
Yes, I'm sorry, the roadshow will be at Bradley Central High School on Wednesday, December 11.
Okay, thank you for that correction. Anything else?
December 11.
December the 11th, Bradley Central.
Not the 10th.
Not the 10th. December the 11th. Thank you. Any agenda items for the next meeting? At this time, I would like to give Dr. Jeff Lovinggood an opportunity to speak to you and to us about his future plans for himself and his family and his appointment to this board.
Well, one, I am way blessed. And I'm blessed by the Lord to be able to do what I get to do. And, and I was raised in this community, and this town has meant so much to me in my life, and I'm blessed to have been raised in a community like Bradley County, Cleveland County. To be able to grown up with many of you, and I'm way blessed to have a family like I have. A tremendous wife for 37 years, three kids, one is a church planner in Denver, one does neurology in Tallahassee, and one just moved to Nashville yesterday. Six grandkids, and so I'm way blessed with an unbelievable family. I'm way blessed to have had a seventh grade teacher named Nancy Ashler, who taught me how to read the second time in seventh grade, who told me that everyone's intelligent, we just have to find out where. What a teacher. She believed in me, and thank God she did. I'm blessed to have lived in a community where academic excellence is important. I got a phone call, as Rachel and I usually walk in the evenings over there by the university, after Jerry Frazier went to be with the Lord, and said, Jeff, would you be, would you consider serving on the school board of Bradley County? And I'd share with Mr. Frazier after Bradley Cleveland Junior varsity football game that I would help the Education Foundation, and Rodney Fitzgerald, they'd asked me to come and serve on that. And then, when he went to be with the Lord, I would put my name in to be on the school board. And I wrestled with that, but I'm going to tell you something, it's been awesome. It's been awesome. Academic excellence is a big deal to me. They didn't think I would make it through elementary and middle school. But then when I received my doctor's degree at Wake Forest, and stood in front of those folks, and I said, you know what? Thank the Lord that a teacher in Bradley County believed in me. Academic excellence is important to Dr. Cash. I've known Dr. Cash for a long time. I knew her in Sumner County, at Station Camp Elementary, where we got to do life together there and encouraged that community of academic excellence. It's great to serve on the school board, to hear Teddy talk about field trips. I love Teddy Bryson. And for him to look at me one day and say, Jeff, I want you to do my funeral one day, that meant a lot to me. For Nancy Kason, who I've known forever playing tennis with my father-in-law, Dr. Charles Tollitt, and the whole Tollitt family, such a great lady. To Josh, Josh Taylor, who cares, who wants to do things well, who has a passion for the community. For Rachel, that has a heart big as Dallas. Unbelievable passion, cares for the underdog. It's fun to call Rachel over Christmas and say, hey, can I, how can we pray together? For Amanda here, I'm going to tell you right now, she has a great family, great boys. And you know one thing that she wants to do? She wants to do things well. That's why Ms. Vicky Beatty will put her in charge of things, and she'll look at, what in the world am I doing? Because she does it well. She takes it seriously. And Vicky Beatty.
Uh-oh.
I love talking to Vicky Beatty. You know why I love talking with, one, she's a great thinker. She's a great thinker. And you know what, you want a person in that position that's a great thinker, because her agenda is to do things with excellence. Looking at the whole, it's great to serve this board. It's great to have this administration. Y'all do a great job. The principals, Patrick, you do a great job. I'm proud of you. From a young boy that's sitting behind my house growing up, playing ball, your daddy would be proud of you. Your whole family, me too, your brother. What great principals we have, tremendous teachers. Students, wow. Students, you understand, if we're teaching students, they change the world. I was one of those students. And you know what? What opportunity we have. You know, for such a time as this, we get to do life together. We can do life together. And it's been an honor for me to do life with you. God willing, I'll be back. I'm like a boogeyman. But you know, for a time as this, to be able to serve the 7th district. God has me on an assignment that I got to do. And so thank you for letting me serve you.
Thank you, Dr. Lovinggood, and we appreciate your contributions to this board and your passion for public education and for the children of Bradley County. And it has been an honor to work with you on this board, and we wish you well. Sometimes it's hard to accept a resignation, but we know that you're going on to a new adventure, and we wish you well. Thank you.
Thank you. Pleasure.
Dr. Lovinggood, we have a little something for you to take with you.
Thank you. Well, I love to play golf.
Now you have to look, now look at them.
Oh.
Hey Jeff, there's some golf clubs on Northland House.
Yeah, that'd be good. What about the school board, amen, the county school board, the school system, amen. Thank you so much. And, and what y'all don't know is Miranda does this for me every school board meeting. I had Pammy Williams as my ad man for years, and she gives me peanut butter crackers. It's the food of choice. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Lovinggood. Anything else? Thank you very much, and we wish you well, Dr. Lovinggood.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.